Hello, it's Soleto. We're the Board of Alderman Meeting, Soleto Municipal Building, 301 North Stage Coast, Soleto, Texas, January 26, 2020, 9:00, 6:30, 1:00 P.M. Call over, please.
Hold on a sec.
Here.
There, please, press it.
Here.
Hold on a second.
Here.
Hold on a second.
Here.
Here.
Let us power heads for prayer, please. God, we live in troubled times. And we're sending people many places. Young people, middle-aged people, even small children. Protect them. Protect their families. You will hold the family together while they're gone. We live in a time when we're making decisions on whether to run for an office or whether to vote for the people. We just simply place that into your hands. I want to watch over our community, keep us safe. Help us get through the construction time. Show us the way in which to go. May our tempers be sharp. May our thinking be deep. And may our love for this community and for each other stay on top. Now bless us as we go through a period of time, far an hour, two hours, and may we make the right decision in accordance to your will. Amen. Let's have a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where all whose descendants are nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the essence, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Our first action of business tonight is the Zone Board of Adjustment. Chrissy, are you going to present this?
Mayor, she comes to the podium very quickly just to let you guys know, disregard the second map that's in your package. The first map should have been different than the map you want referenced, not the reference map.
This is what we're going to do. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a request to vary from certain provisions of the Village of Soleto zoning ordinance to allow for construction of a fence in the front yard of a single-family residential property and the construction of an accessory building without a main structure on the same property located at 461 Van Biver Road, Soleto Vale, Texas, Vale County. Chrissy.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Good evening. Again, this is to hold a public hearing to consider a variance from the zoning ordinance section 5.3(c)(1)(b), which prohibits fences in the front yard of any single-family residential lot, and from the zoning ordinance section 41g(4)(c), which prohibits an accessory building without a main structure for a property located at 461 Van Biver Road. The applicant, David Patterson, would like to repair the existing pipe fence that is already along the front of his property. If the fence is unable to be repaired in its present state, he would like to replace it with a similar pipe fence. He would also like to install the limestone columns at the gate. And he's provided a site plan you have in your packet that depict the fence as it is existing today and as it would be if he replaced it. And also the limestone columns are depicted on that site plan as well. Mr. Patterson is also seeking a variance to construct an accessory building prior to construction of his main residence. The building will be used as a detached garage. In the event Mr. Patterson is able to sell his current home in Soleto prior to the completion of his new home, he will use the accessory building as living quarters. The space will be built with a full bath and small kitchenette. Upon completion of the main structure on the property, the dwelling aspect of the accessory building will be abandoned. Attached again is a site plan which depicts where the accessory building will be located. It also depicts where the future residents will be located. It is a 40 by 50, I'm sorry, 50 by 60-foot accessory building, 3,000 square feet. We did send notice of the public hearing and we published it in the Village Voice on Thursday, January 2. Additionally, 11 property owners within 200 feet of the request were notified. I'd like to point out the conditions required for variance. One, that there are special circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved, such that the strict application of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land. And that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right of the applicant. And that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to other property owners within the area. And that the granting of the variance will not have the effect of preventing the orderly use of other land within the area in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance. We did receive five responses back out of the 11 we sent. Two were completely in favor of both variance requests. Two were opposed to the accessory building prior to the main structure but were in agreement with the fence request. And then one just came back opposed to both items. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is here to present his request to you as well. And I would just remind the mayor that as the zoning board of adjustments, you are a voting member on this board.
Thank you. Questions, please, Chrissy.
I got a question. Will the main structure be destroyed?
Yes.
As far as it can be prepared?
Considerable. The main structure itself? How? I don't believe we have that, that it's going to set back from the property line a considerable amount.
Which line? Which property line?
Yeah.
For the existing fence that you have there?
The existing fence that's up front.
Yeah.
Over 200 feet.
Let me expound on that, how far from the fence that's adjacent to the closest fence?
The closest neighbor would be about 20, 25 foot off of that fence.
And this fence was there far to the purchase of the land?
I'm sorry?
The fence was there far to the purchase of the land?
Yes.
Other questions, please?
The existing fence was already there, it's just it's a old, I understand, fence. It's leaning.
It's almost a red house.
It is. It was at Van Biver, you know, we were going to attempt to maybe try to straighten it up because the trees and stuff had kind of grown up through it. So it's kind of leaning over and so in order to make it look better, we can try to either lean it up. In the event we weren't able to do that and make it look good, we were just going to go with entirely new pipe fence. All that. The accessory building, and one of the changes that we've had is we do not plan on being in it this anymore. We just want to go ahead and get it built. When we bought the property about a year ago, there were accessory structures all over the property. They were all disrepair. We took all of those out, we cleaned them all up. And so, you know, at this time, we wanted to go ahead and put an accessory structure back. I've had the advantage of surveying the Board of Adjustments before, and I know some of the questions you have to answer is this, how is this different from the ordinance? I believe this is different because it's not all things in one box when you write the ordinance. While I agree, an accessory structure on, say, a 70 by 100 residential lot could be concerning because the neighbors would have to see it, it's close and everything. This is a five-acre piece of property, and so I feel like it's outside of the norm of the, what the ordinance intended. If you have to answer any other questions.
So I have a question, I think Chrissy or anyone of you means, or so we still have this conversation if the accessory structure was going to be located in the backyard? Because I can see it looks like it's in the side door.
Well, the ordinance or the request is to do the accessory structure prior to the house.
Amber, the ordinance says that you cannot have an accessory structure without a resident's employees. So that's the issue. And so what we did was we talked to the gentleman about whether it was his intent to live in it because he's, so there's some thought process that they might live in it at some point while they're building their main house, but wouldn't be the permanent house. He said there's a possibility of that depending on how soon their house sells, but he doesn't feel comfortable making a commitment to live in it.
And for clarification, we don't require the accessory building to be in their rear yard, we just don't allow them in front of the front line of the house. So it does meet the requirement for accessory structure.
Okay.
If you, I don't know, if you've looked at the packet, the accessory structure will be in all limestone front, so it should blend fairly well with the aesthetics of the actual house itself.
I guess my concern is with the adjacent property owner, what is their view of that structure? And I know you said it's like 20 or 25 feet.
I've talked to the property owners on either side of me, I believe both of them are in favor.
How are the property owners?
Sandor is on one side of me and Gary Jones is on the other side of me.
So if you'll see in your supplement, we gave you the responses from the people who were notified. One of the next-door neighbors was in opposition to the temporary living quarters. I don't know that he was, can't speak for him if he was opposed to the actual accessory building. Again, this is for the building being built before the main structure.
That's Mr. Sandor's comment.
Right, so I'm looking at three people that are opposed. We kind of got a split decision going on here with fence end and beginning. And I think our job up here is to listen to what the people want. And in my view of this, right now, this shows a three to two in favor of no building, no cable fence.
The thing to understand about this decision versus a Board of Alderman decision is you're in a different role, you're in a different capacity in what you're sitting in right now. You have a different set of guidelines that you're supposed to make your decisions on. There are standards that are in your packet that point out the things you need to consider in the determination. In fact, you'll need to make an affirmative finding of those conditions if you choose to grant this particular variance. It's also important on those, the opposition that you see, is to look at that opposition and see the basis of that opposition. And in this case, which is kind of unusual, to be honest with you, you actually have individuals who've written in the detail as far as what their concerns are. Example being the Barn Dominion question really comes out of play because keep in mind with the legislative changes, we don't have any control over building materials at all at this stage of the game. And that, of course, is one of the big concerns of the Barn Dominion, you know, issue erupted in that neighborhood, what, a year and a half ago? So, you know, if you read those, the opposition thought processes as opposed to just opposition is always good. But keep in mind, you've got certain conditions you need to consider before you up or down the variance.
I have another question. So I know that you said that you probably weren't planning on living in it at this point, but it will still have living quarters. So you're gonna, it's gonna be a single structure, it's on water meter, it's on utilities, it's on everything.
I would be comfortable at this point if it was approved to just say we wouldn't be selling our houses, Escalade, quicker than we thought we would. So I don't think I would even have it done in time. I would anticipate we'll take the building permit out of the house shortly.
What, I want to ask this question too. If the house was already there, would the structure, would we have any say in whether he could build a structure there or not? Or would he be able to build a structure without any doubt?
He'd be able to build your live accessory building, and this one's positioned such that it's, it would be legal, so there would not be an issue. It all comes down to back to the structure. Exactly what it is.
Or if he applied for both permits at the same time, we would not be here. It's just because one permit's coming in before the other.
So I see kind of three different things here. One, I see a fence. So the variance for the fence is obviously separate from the building. So I know where I stand on the fence, I mean, not all of it's. But then it comes down to just the living, or the building itself. As long as you're not going to live there, I mean, the building's going to light up there one way or another.
That's for it.
So, you know.
We're just asking that everybody have the time to do it before the house, but either way, they're going to open it up there.
If we approve the variance, could he build the building with the living quarters in there? And then after he's built, he could move in, I mean, without any doubt?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. That's, that's the hang-up on the building part.
Well, I mean, I think I've visited with the city. I mean, ultimately, I could do it as a residential permit, but then the Barn Dominion never even asked about trying to do it the right way. And say, you know, this is the correct procedure, to be honest with everybody, and do it correctly.
And as you said, he can submit both permits at the same time if he's that close to the house as far as submitting that single-family residential permit. That's a timed permit, he's got a certain amount of time to get that done or ask for an extension.
I have a question, Don, is didn't we approve a steel pipe fence on Sandor's property right next to him as a variance in just not too long?
Yes.
Isn't it true that a lot of the other areas along that Van Biver where he's proposing has the steel pipe fence? So if we don't approve it, we're just be picking on this gentleman?
I think there are very few properties over there that don't have front lawn fence.
Right. And that is the actual question, not the material that is a pipeline, but that is in the front yard. And many properties on Van Biver do have front lawn fences.
Pretty common. And because a lot of those houses sit on estate-sized lots, in this situation, we were talking about it internally, this lot probably is not zone property. That, of course, we're not impacting the variance. But, I mean, it's more, it's a five-acre tract as opposed to a typical half-acre, single- sided lot, for instance.
Yeah, the recommendation of the village is to approve the fence and disapprove the living arrangements?
The village's tab on variance requests, we typically don't weigh in here. That's really, it's a...
I'm giving you a chance here, Don. Stay with me.
Well, again, I'm going to tell you, on this one, we're not dodging, we just, we stay typically out of those because it's a quasi-conditional decision, right? The only way your decision gets appealed is through court.
Sir, could you please tell me, except for without law test, I'm familiar with that near the road, but can you tell me where that is?
It's in the, if you're coming from Main Street, it's right in the bend. As soon as you take the bend, there's a large tract, it's five acres right there on the tree.
It's east of the tree, it's east of the big tree that sits up?
Yes.
Down the street from existing Barn Dominion.
I wonder if you would consider building the house first and the other building?
If you turn it, yeah, that's what I'll have to do. We're going to do both either way. We had tore down a bunch of accessory buildings that were in bad disrepair. I think, you know, what we're talking about is going back with a brand-new building that's got a totally rock front, it's not going to look like a Barn Dominion. We did the evaluations. Time-wise, it would be better for us to go ahead and be started on that. It simply would allow us to store some of the stuff out of our existing house when we sell it prior to the new house being done. It's one of the reasons we asked. I don't think it's uncommon to see an accessory building on a five-acre tract. I understand that, you know, the zoning ordinance why it's in place for a residential lot, but as Mr. Perkins has stated, this is an unusual lot. It's not just a small half-acre lot, it's five acres.
Any other questions, please? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'm going to be great for variance.
Second.
Motion's been made around variance, and it's been subject to discussion.
I do entertain both variance, it's the fence and the structure.
The mayor, your motion should make an affirmative finding of all of the required conditions if it's desired to approve.
Do you accept that, like what he just does?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, please.
I'm not comfortable with the, with having somebody move into an accessory building that a lot of the neighbors have recommended not be approved without. So I'm kind of comfortable with the rock columns and the fence because I think we need really look at our ordinance in that area and maybe give them just an overall waiver for the steel fences and the pipes so we don't have to have this kind of meeting again. But I'm comfortable with the amount of complaints we had about people moving into an accessory building at this time, so.
I've got the impression from the applicant that that would not be the case.
That's not what this says in front of us. In front of us, it says we're going to grant him the approval to build an accessory building and move into it and occupy it until it gets his house.
Mayor, can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Do you have both buildings designed right now? Are they, are they closer things than them?
We're, our tech's finishing the work on the house, and we can amend that to saying that we will not live in it. I'm comfortable in doing that at this point just because our timelines have changed due to the sale of the house. We would still like to do the accessory building first just for the fact that we can store some stuff and utilize it. But I'm fine with taking that off.
If you go back, if you go back and he withdraws this partition and he goes and submits a building, a building permit that includes his accessory building, and we don't really care when he builds the accessory building.
That was going to be exactly, I was going to say, if he has, if he has both buildings designed and ready to go permanent on them, and he comes in and pulls those, there's a timing on the building permit, and that is there has to be activity within a six-month period. Clearly, it's, it sounds like he's real close to that point from the standpoint of starting activity, and there has to be continuous activity. We don't care which building he builds first, as we said earlier. It's truly, if they both come at the same time, it's compliant in our, in our view from that standpoint. And he can choose which one to build, he's just going to make sure that when he pulls his permit, that keeps the activity process flowing on one of the other buildings, so nothing goes wrong.
Seems to me we need a motion one for the fence, or we need another one for, or we don't need one at all for the building.
I guess there would be a direct question I'd ask the applicant, and that is, is that something you would, you would rather go that route?
Well, I'm sorry, what's that be?
The route would be that you would submit plans for the building and, for the accessory building and the house at the same time. You don't have to start construction on the house first, you can start construction on the accessory building first and then follow with the house, provided you don't go six months without any activity.
No, I mean, I would still have to proceed with the accessory building just because I have that permit already submitted, and we can start tomorrow.
Okay.
The house, we still have to finish the plans, I'm probably still several, you know, I may get those plans submitted in the next probably three or four weeks. It will take several weeks to get those back, and so, you know, probably several months. And so, the reason I'm wanting to do the accessory structure is so that in the interim, I can put some stuff in there, have some equipment, holding equipment, that kind of stuff there and be able to do it.
So it sounds, it sounds like the variance application for the building stays, and you want us all to consider that. So that alternative approach does not work, so you're for you, two variances, one for the building and one for the fence.
The motion, I mean, is to approve both of them at this time.
That's great. I will amend that motion, and we can vote on the amendment that provided the living, that the structure is not made until the new orders. And the fence?
Right.
Would it be living quarters, they just don't live it or don't make it living quarters?
Right, I requested you amend it to disapprove the request to build the accessory building early and to go ahead and approve.
That's not my motion. He's agreed that he's not going to live it. So I'm making my motion that they do not live in the building, they use it as a storage building. You're making that?
Make the data in the motion with the vote first, then the second.
So you want, you want, you want?
We already have a motion, the second mayor, so what I'm doing is I amended my original motion, so if you vote on it.
That's right, that's exactly. How many do you want, Susan? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment. Frank, would you, one more time, take that amendment?
Amendment is that he has stipulated, and we would agree that he would not use that as any quarters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion. Mr. Patterson, are you available?
I'm fine with that, we've already made other living arrangements for the interim.
I still think the process should be for us to deny both of these requests and for the applicant to come back and put in a permit request for the accessory building and his house at the same time. And then it basically does the same thing without us having to go through the waiver of decision here tonight.
Other discussion, please? Question on the amendment? Question on the amendment has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, like what?
Four votes.
Four votes for, so we've got that amendment is now added to the motion. Now, give me the whole motion now.
Motion to approve the variance for building the, excuse me, for replacing or repairing the fence and building storage structure.
Do you hold the second amendment?
Okay, can we restate the motion so I'm sure we've got, what I'm hearing is, the motion has amended is that you approve the variance for the accessory building, but provision doesn't live in it, and that you approve the fence. Is that true?
And, and we do have a second amendment? Motion's been made, seconded, discussion, please. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, like what? Make it pretty, sir.
Build it just like the drawl.
I have no sense of these communications up here, so we can go on to the next one. Turning to the page. Concerned agenda number eight, approval of minutes of a regular Board of Alderman meeting of January 2, 2020, B, approval of December 2019, financial statements for the Village of Soleto. I'll entertain a motion, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, the second dead, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, like what? Passes. Next, to Amber. I would like, Amber was telling me about something that we're going to do or what she is proposing for you to be a part of that deals with the fire in Australia.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention an event that's coming up in Soleto on January 26 at Barrow, they're going to have the Third Angel Australia Day. This year, it's making it extremely special because 50% of all sales for that day go to the Rural Fire Service in Australia to help battle the wildfires. Because you guys know, we have several people in Soleto that are from Australia originally. It makes it extra special because my daughter's teachers went up on, and her family has been directly impacted, and she said most of the people or the places that they visited or vacation when she was little are completely gone. It's, it's terrible situation that they're in, and so 50% of all sales for the day will go to the Rural Fire Service directly to them. So you don't have to worry about, you know, going to a charity and then you're not really sure where your money went, it definitely just goes to their fire service. And I know that if we were in a very similar situation, we'd really appreciate people donating to our local volunteer fire department, so I think it's a really worthy cause. So again, on the January 26, and it's from noon to 8:00 P.M. this Sunday, so if you can come, we'd really appreciate it.
Noon to what?
Eight to five.
50% is very generous.
Yes.
That's good. And, that's typical. And that's typical Soleo. That's where we do business. All right. Number four, village administrator's report.
Mayor, could you possibly move the racial profiling report up before I go into my report so we allow Chief Funt to disappear into the night?
I can do that.
That would be your agenda.
I need you. If you, if you're following us in this, you'll have to go through all the pages, first two and it's part of one here just so that if you're reading along with us, you won't know exactly what we're gonna be doing. This is number seven being moved to discuss and consider possible action regarding the 2019 Village of Soleo Police Department racial profiling report.
Yes, sir. As required by state law, the code of law procedure required, you present this to the city council to order all of it for your approval for more accident to the state to T Cole. As you can see, our total stops from last year were, this is traffic stop, so 1,045, we break down a gender between the drivers of the vehicle and the email to raise your ethnicity. You can see the breakdown there, uh, the breakdown between the ethnicities recognized by the state. Whether the ethnicity was known prior to stop, yes, you know, again, these are all required, this is part of the checklist when you're writing citation numbers. Violation of law and if it would be violation, it's most, I mean, the most prominent part. And then vehicle traffic is gonna be, um, registration, uh, license plate light being out or defective equipment, that's a weird vehicle traffic violations as opposed to violation of just stop signs, speeding and so forth. Uh, the location where the stops, the, um, where we're heading, the highway or city streets, county roads and so forth. Whether or not searches were conducted based on the traffic stop themselves and the reasons for the searches, whether it was for some contraband, illegal property, so whether the arrests were resulted from the traffic stop. If the contraband was discovered during those searches and then what was discovered in those searches. Uh, the results of the stop by the 1,045 and, uh, 651 verbal warnings, written, uh, written warnings and then your citations, written warnings, this is, it's a verbal warning, this is some officers choose to bring off and you get to explain what the violation was. A lot of times that's a verbal violation, so they have something they wanna go to the county and have to look at. They read if an arrest was made, wasn't based on the violation of traffic code or email. And physical force using resulting violation, zero. Didn't have any physical implications or anything in terms of.
Hey, you make a remark, but in fact, you're also obligated to have policies relating to racial profiling.
Yes, sir. The policies, uh, part of the checklist when I submit a report to T Cole is that we have policies defining what racial profiling is, it's all covered in chapter two of the code of law procedure. You leave those policies beyond ways that people, if they have a complaint, they can file one, uh, we have a recording form on our website and, uh, they can call or report on the recording form and we'll investigate those for them.
Questions, please, to the chief.
Chief, put in 11 of 19 here, uh, searches resulted in contraband. Is that a normal metric? Is that a metric that is of the standard for the state or is that high as opposed to?
It varies, it varies probably from year to year. I know when I was with another agency, you can see those numbers fluctuate every year. Uh, you know, contraband, illegal property, 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 marijuana, vehicle, and searches in vehicle and property, you may not find it because they are, spoke of marijuana, so. It just varies.
And, uh, I believe it said seven, I think it was seven, uh, pullovers knew the race of the person who pulled over. Is that just a function of?
Just observation.
Just observation, knew that before you ever got out?
Yeah, you may be making a turn and you could see them visually, you know, but a lot of times you're pulling up behind them, window tint, you may not see it at night, you're never gonna, uh, to be quite honest, the speed of the vehicle, you, you may not get to it at all. And then some of the stops may be resulting from assistance calling in a plane to the dispatch about maybe some reverse driver or something, so you may know that as well going into it.
I wish my chief, back where this law, you showed written warnings and. Every time I get pulled in, I get a ticket. It's, it's religion. So.
I'm not gonna comment.
I got two of them in here in Soleo, so. How come we write so many verbal warnings and not write warrants?
It's, it's officer discretion. A lot of times the side of the vehicle, like maybe several stops is we, a lot of times it's because people don't know they have a, a vehicle defect, like a brake light out, you know, the system, no one tells them, you know, they're violating the law, but it's more about courtesy. If I stop somebody. School zones, construction zones, you could probably throw out any kind of warning that you're gonna get on that, you're gonna probably get a ticket on that.
Speeding is a guarantee, sir.
Depending on where it's at, school zones, construction zones, those are big numbers, but, uh, it varies. Yes, I, I mean, if I were to stop somebody, they had multiple violations, oh man, there's gonna be at least one citation, more than likely one citation in verbal warnings for others as well. I, I don't feel it's right to, just when I was a rookie here many years ago, I stopped somebody, they had five violations, they got five citations and, you know, kind of pull in the reins and realize that that's not the proper way to go. You spend all your time in court too because it's, uh, just, you know, just a little hold of court, so that's what I've talked to my officers about when I'm not here. It's probably, it's probably everything, it's more about, you know, community police and talking to people, a lot of people don't go out there, break the law, be here.
Kind of a lot of it has to do with those, with those compliance. And, and if they feel they can accomplish compliance with, with a warning, they'll move in that direction. If they feel that's egregious enough that they need to be basically educated a little bit, then they may be a ticket.
Our system often documents previous written warnings and if they receive written warnings, obviously continues to be a problem.
Don't look in my file. Blow that one off. I just wondered why the big delta between the two.
Other questions to the chief, please.
You have an anti-sticker on the back, is that sort of a handicap kind of?
I'd think anything if it doesn't say Ohio State on it.
Other questions, please. I'm gonna take a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion's been made to accept, uh, the proposal that the chief has made, a second has been done, question, uh, discussion, please.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise.
Chief, you have the Ohio State sticker to put on a truck just to pur.
Sure. The Ohio State.
Be a lot of important ones.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to the agenda that I was trying to cover. I'll be up for it here. Okay, we're ready to go down to the village administrator's report. Do you want it here, Don, or you want it somewhere else?
Oh, no, let's roll. I'll, I'll get there and I know you've got some items you're anxious to get to, so I'll try to move rather quickly through this. Uh, first of all, status report on the wastewater project, connection activity has increased considerably. Uh, as you know, the February 28th deadline is, is nearing, so we're seeing a, a significant uptick as far as the permits being pulled and, and installation activity. Approximately 60% of the properties now have been connected to or in the process of connecting to the wastewater system. Uh, the process of recalculating commercial wastewater bills for the coming year is underway. You know, we will calculate those based on the previous 12 months' usage. Uh, the residential wastewater bills will be recalculated in March. That, of course, is after the winter averaging period of November, December, January, February. Uh, crews have repaired the village sewer line that was discovered last week. It was damaged, uh, Century Link's contractor who apparently directionally drilled through a six inch sewer line, uh, to install a fiber cable. So, uh, we worked the Century Link to get that fixed and that line is back up and functioning. Village staff is preparing cost estimates for the possible enclosure of the Royal Street Lift Station, which might help eliminate any and all odor from that station. Uh, and the thought process is, as part of that design, we would potentially include, uh, the construction of some public restroom facilities as part of that enclosure. We, of course, will keep you updated on those type of costs. Status report on the Main Street project. Wow. Uh, crews have started pouring concrete in the process of replacing bridge culvert structure over the Rock Creek area. You know, they've been at that now for about a week. Uh, Main Street closure of Rock Creek is expected to remain in place until mid-February, uh, weather permitting. As you know, their contract has a 40-day, uh, period, that's 40 calendar days. Uh, if they get done, uh, 30 days, uh, you know, or sooner, they get money from the state. Uh, but 40 days is when they're supposed to be done now, weather permitting. Uh, the village's request, Tech Scott has installed additional detour signage to advise motorists how to get around the closure. A little bit of discussion on that and that is, when, when they, when they set out their detour signage, which they had some 16 signs, I believe, uh, that were as part of their original layout, uh, the detour basically that they set out, uh, took people to the closed bridge and didn't tell them where to go after that. Uh, and so we immediately mentioned that to Tech Scott the, the Monday after they, they began work on the project, uh, and, and they indicated that they couldn't detour, we mentioned this, I think, the last meeting, that their policy is it's a state detour and that they cannot detour on the city streets. Uh, our comment to them was, it made absolutely no sense, uh, the way it was set up right now and that it was a safety hazard, uh, that was taking people down into a construction zone, people who, a lot of them didn't know how to get around town and we're asking them to back up, turn around while you've got dump trucks and cranes and the concrete trucks pulling into the zone itself. Uh, so, uh, they then came back and said, well, what do you want? And, and we said, you need some detour signings to get people to turn off onto Thomas Arnold and onto Blacksmith, uh, to get around it so they can get to the other end of Main Street and sign it appropriately to do so. Uh, their comment was, we would agree to do that if and only if the village would agree not to hold Tech Scott liable for any street damage on those city streets caused by this project. And our comment was, you're out of your mind. And, and, you know, I, we don't have any intent at this stage of the game to file a claim to them, to have them repair any roadways, but the reality of it is this, they're grinding multi-ton dump trucks and cement trucks up and down Thomas Arnold from the construction side and then their comment was, well, fine, tell them not to go on the city streets. And our comment was, that is absolutely crazy. You're, you're saying you would actually advocate sending construction crews down the front and drive them back down Main Street. Uh, at the, at the end of the discussion, uh, they began to see a reason, we ended up with the top folks from Waco coming down and they finally moved and finally installed the signage, uh, with the understanding that we still potentially could come back on them if in the future we see there was road damage on those two roadways, uh, and on any city roadway, quite frankly. Uh, because keep in mind, they've been doing work on Royal also. But they have installed the signage and, and traffic seems to be following that signage. People now have a place to go, they now know where to go. Uh, still a lot of signage in that area, kind of confusing, a lot of activity in that area and it should settle out once the bridge gets reopened, of course, the detour goes away at that point. Uh, our hope is that, that project will be done, that portion of the project, as we mentioned earlier, is gonna be done in mid-February, but, uh, they responded and we appreciate their response. Uh, they indicated to us that the strong position they took regarding liability and repairing the roadway stemmed from a neighboring community in which they almost repaid the entire downtown for that neighboring community. Uh, our comment was, our job is not to take advantage of Tech Scott, we're concerned about safety, we're also concerned about people coming back to our community and not leaving with a, a lost experience, so that's done. So, uh, just enough said as far as the detour goes, uh, you know, it seems to be working at this point, we'll continue to monitor it and adjust as necessary. Uh, crews are focusing efforts on North Main Street. If you've not noticed, uh, they're installing electrical conduit for streetlights, uh, drainage pipe, they're also doing driveway demos. They're coming back in after they do the driveway demos, uh, and putting in temporary driveways for those folks, so there's one on Main Street that does not appear to have been done yet, but that's because they had a minor incident yesterday in which the contractor, uh, cut a hole right through a fiber line, a Century Link. And so, uh, they spent the night, last night, late night, in fact, uh, pulling new fiber and getting that situation repaired. Uh, they also have damaged one of our sewer tabs in the last two weeks, uh, and they've busted a couple of water lines, so these things are expected and this is not being said in a critical sense, uh, you're dealing with a, a major construction project, a major overhaul of a pre-existing built-out area, uh, with, quite frankly, a lot of unknown location of utilities. Uh, as we discovered with the wastewater project, Century Link does not have a real accurate picture of where their lines are underground, uh, and, uh, I think everybody, you know, does the best, probably, we have the most, we have the most recent location maps, the Water Spike Corporation has tremendous institutional knowledge about the location of their lines, but we're all gonna get through this, it's just gonna be a matter of being patient. Uh, this is a difficult time in the project as they keep things up, so, uh, just kind of hang tight and, and everybody take a deep breath, I think we'll be fine. Status report on development activity, residential permits. Uh, I wanted to give you guys an idea of, of what type of activity we've seen at least in the last 12 months. We're producing some historical data, looking at some five-year trends, which I think you might find interesting, we'll present those at later date, but just doing a year-to-year comparison between this year and last year, uh, we basically had one more home permitted, uh, than the last year, four new homes were permitted in 2019 versus three. Uh, remodels, uh, one over, uh, again, one more remodel than we had the year before. Home additions, we actually had one less. Uh, swimming pools, uh, went down a little bit this past year, fence construction went up, I don't know what that says. Uh, total residential permits issued, when you looked at all of our residential permitting categories, we're up about 4% in residential permit activities, uh, the total, uh, total improvement value of about $2.7 million, up about 5% from the previous year. So clearly, uh, development activity is on the rise in the city. As far as commercial permits go, new commercial buildings, so we didn't have any new permitted commercial buildings, uh, but we did see some activity as far as commercial building remodels, uh, down just a little bit from the prior year. Uh, additions was up, uh, so it balanced out there. Certificates of occupancy, uh, pretty much level, we're down about 5%. Assigned permits were down. Total commercial permits, though, were up, uh, 102 to 87, about 17%. Uh, you ask, where is that number? That number in large part is in the MEP, the mechanical, uh, electrical plumbing, in large part plumbing permits, and that's because we issue permits for wastewater connections. Uh, so those are cost-free permits, but that indicates that the permits, and that's a large part of that increase that you're seeing in there. As far as improvement value, $481,000 in commercial improvement value, uh, compared to 94.4 of the prior year. As far as our subdivision zoning activity, uh, in, in 2019, we processed and, and took to you four concept plans as opposed to zero the previous year. Uh, minor plats, so we had nine this year and nine last year, so those balanced out. Major plats, we had seven major plats this past year versus six. The total lots plat, this is kind of an interesting number, we added 356 lots to the village compared to 206 the year before. As far as annexations go, we have the five annexations that we talked about. In zoning cases, we had three zoning cases this past year versus one the previous year. So you can see, uh, things have been busy as far as activity and, uh, we're not seeing any major relief in sight as, uh, the beginning of the new year, we're seeing an awful lot of inquiries and also a lot of applications coming through the front doors. Status report on the Thomas Arnold Bridge railing, uh, we asked Cory Kelly, as you know, to come, come up with a couple of designs for an S. Tech Scott could not seem to, uh, figure out how to make an S work in, in the area that they normally had a star. As you know, we, was the board indicating that you did not want a star, you wanted an S. Uh, so we asked Cory to come up with a couple of designs. He came up with, uh, his first design was, was an S that kind of incorporated three lines, uh, that kind of created an impression of creek or river, uh, and then we asked him to widen the center line to see what that looks, to see if it made it look more like an S. Uh, the input we've gotten from two board members, and that's the only folks who've weighed in at this stage of the game, was they'd rather see something along the lines of, uh, the S similar to what we have on our gateway signs. Uh, so we pulled that font out and threw that in there and this is what it looks like. Uh, so unless we hear difference based on the input we've received, we're gonna proceed with the S like we have on the gateway signs and send that to Tech Scott. They want us to provide that design to them so they can get this thing ordered by the end of the month. Uh, so does anybody have any comment they want to offer on that very quickly before I move on?
I like the S. First ever one, I like that.
Which, which S do you like?
I like the one on the right.
Okay. We're moving forward with the one on the right, unless we're your options.
Thank you.
Status report on a couple of miscellaneous items. Keepsalea Beautiful, uh, has received a grant that we partnered with them on submitting, uh, and it's a grant that's gonna be used to purchase recycling, uh, containers that will be set up on Main Street, Serena Park and Face Park and emptied on a regular basis by the city staff. Uh, those containers will have our logo on them as well as Keepsalea Beautiful's logo on them and they'll also mark the various type of recyclable items that people will be allowed to, to put out. We're also probably gonna purchase some companion trash receptacles so they look, uh, match with, with these new containers look like. I think you'd be pleased with the color. We hope to have those out probably sometime in February, if not early March. State and federal funding windows are opening for flood mitigation grants. We've talked about this a couple of times in the last few months. We've talked about this a couple of times in the last few months. The village is going to be seeking funding for low water crossing gates and two outdoor warning signs, as far as sirens go. So just kind of beat that on your radar and know that we'll be coming to you for the authorization resolutions in the coming years. With a recent series of auto thefts, the police department is preparing their village-wide mailing, basically advising residents of the need to lock their home and also to lock their vehicles. We're a small community, and we're lucky, we're very unique, but the kicker is we still live on the interstate. And at the end of the day, we need to understand that we have to do our part in the world of crime prevention to keep these type of things from happening. If these guys come into town, these yahoos come into town with the intent of breaking into vehicles, if they start hitting doors that are locked, if they start hitting homes that are locked, they're more apt to move to another community because they realize that the field is not green for picking. So that said, it's imperative that people understand that they make it, make it part of their normal lifestyle, locking their doors, keeping the valuables out of plain view. And when I talk about locking doors, I'm talking about locking whole doors as well as residential doors, and for Lord's sake, don't leave your keys in your vehicle. And that means even if they're in, even if in the garage, don't hesitate to do that. It's just, it's something to get a good happen about here. But we're going to be sending out a written reminder to residents. We're also going to be working with folks in Mill Creek about re-establishing Neighborhood Watch and reinvigorating the Neighborhood Watch program. As you know, this Saturday, there's going to be a kind of a little mini-town hall with the library, I understand, where Chief Boone and the Sheriff's Department are going to be there to talk to residents. Mayor Lancer will be holding a town hall meeting relating to crimes or relating to the state of the city, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, next Tuesday, at the Salado Civic Center, and that meeting will begin at six o'clock. And that's all I've got there. Well, let me go very quickly, talk about sales tax collection. We thought we'd throw this slide in there. January twenty-twenty sales tax check representing November twenty-nineteen sales, total of forty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars, down about three percent from January check a year ago. But when you drill out in the numbers, look at the actual collections, we're only down about one percent compared to January twenty-nineteen. As you know, this coming check is going to be a good check, this will represent December. Fiscal year-to-date, sales tax collections total, a little over one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, up just slightly from the same period last year. Fiscal year-to-date, our collections represent thirty-six percent of our budget in sales tax revenue, the thirty-three percent mark in the year. Now toss this in there, just out of interest, because we're kind of tracking this too, that since the Main Street construction began, our sales tax revenues are running about seven percent ahead of the prior year. So we'll continue to track those and hopefully we'll keep those numbers at least at level as we wind down the project. The date for completion of that Main Street project, just to remind and to mention, get that up, is they're telling us it's looking like it'll be early to midsummer. They have met with the owners of the company, the contractor, and that contractor's indicated they think, weather permitting, they're going to be able to make up time to deal with some of the design issues they have, and hopefully they can finish it in late May, is their original projection was. I would look for a summer completion date, but that's all I've got there.
And you're saying that the sidewalks, the lighting, and the concrete bridge next to the ring is going to be completed all about first of summer?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
That is, that is, that is what they're indicating, first of summer, first of midsummer.
And what, and what you need to think about is that we have sidewalks, light, new concrete bridge permitting, and we got seven percent more sales taxes.
Right now. And our hope is that that number will remain.
And we did that through the, they did that, we did that through the scroll, right?
Yes, we did. The best scroll we had in recent years.
Oh, yes, I hear a lot about that. But I also hear an awful lot of why we have to do the construction through the scroll so that we can finish by summer. Very good, thank you. I'd love for you to answer.
John, I know that you guys could talk a little bit to Tech Scott about the detour signs, but some of the complaints are actually genuine about, like, the Tech Scott vehicles themselves parking in the roadways, especially since it's been muddy. They don't want to get off and they're right where they're working, and so they're parking in the road and they expect for the even there over, especially right up close to the bridge. Is there any way that we can ask them to find a spot and park it in?
We actually had a visit with them, they're coming and going, as much as they are, as much movement and activity, they're going to try and do what they can to minimize the impacts as far as blocking traffic, sometimes it's just going to be unaffordable. But we, we've expressed our concerns to them about that, not just their vehicles, contractor vehicles, subs vehicles, their inspectors, we told them to park, there's no reason why inspectors can't park in another, as they said the vehicle will walk.
I've got two quick questions, John. How many people have come in this sort of?
It's about sixty percent.
Sixty percent?
Yeah, they're coming, so it's, we kind of expect it, a last-minute rush. I don't know that you're going to have them all connected by the end of February, but I mean, I think you're going to have a significant percentage of them remaining connected.
Okay, one more question. You mentioned that the lift station on Royal Street?
Yes, sir.
Want to talk about that again?
What we're doing in that is, we're exploring, we, Alden Coggin and myself, met with the folks from Barrows to talk about their concerns regarding the lift station and talk about issues relating to odor, but also some other issues relating to that entertainment area itself. And one of the things that came out of that meeting was the idea of, would it be possible to even close that station? And look at maybe enclosing that to minimize any type of odor risk. I mean, we've significantly cut the odor risk back with the filter system we put in place, but you could enclose that thing and put a scrubber in that system in the building itself and literally probably make it odor-free. The idea was, as we talked through that, that concept of enclosure was, maybe it's an opportunity also to build public restrooms as part of that lift station.
I thought you said, you said enclose it?
Enclose.
I thought you said close it.
No, enclose, enclose. Enclose.
Don, you know, that project's dear and dear to me, because I think we did a, the businesses down there, it's not just Barrows, but everybody down there, one of the busiest parts of our community, we did bad injustice putting a lift station down there. So as part of our discussions, we talked about, I wanted to move it, you know, get it out of, you know, wherever it's, in plain sight where the smell is. And I mean, as that evolved, we were talking about a cost of six hundred thousand dollars just to move it and more. And so then, we also understood that we had some, and I'll get to a question here in a second, Josh. And we also understood that, you know, we really just couldn't afford that at this time. And we did meet not only with Barrows, but we met with other company down there, the firm that's right impacted with it, we're Salado, they're not really the same people, but they're sort of the same people. And so at discussion with them, that you and I met with them, was that they were very receptive to helping out, wanted the public restrooms down there. I know that we have some money and a budget for a public restroom, and I think that it's feasible, is that correct, Don?
Yeah, I think it is feasible, and I think that, and I think the cost of enclosing that building may not be as expensive as people think. It certainly can be much more affordable than relocating the lift station. But we'll find out, we've got our engineer working on it.
Looking for four holes on each side, right? And handicap. The best case is that we'd like to see it with some kind of walkway that comes all the way from Royal Street in, so they can use it as a handicap accessible type of facility.
When you talk walkway, you're talking sidewalk.
Yes, and not only benefit this, you know, the two or three businesses right next to it, they can draw people from Main Street, probably will use that. So we're going to agree that, we've agreed to meet with the businesses again, and we're going to keep pushing this until hopefully we can fix that.
Obviously, we'll bring them back to board and keep doing that.
So appreciate that, Don, good work on that.
Okay. Very good. Very, very good. Good report, John, good additions to everything we have decided to report. Well, this is the next one. Appointment of a municipal court judge. A, interview individuals interested in serving as Salado Municipal Court Judge. B, discuss and consider possible action appointing a municipal court judge. Don has given us six questions. What I would like to do with these six questions is to start with Mike, number one, two, John, three, Amber, four, me, five, Frank, six, Rodney. And we will ask those questions just as they're here. And I'm going to ask that whoever is not the first one, whoever's not the first person coming for the interview and for the questions, that the other person, gosh, I hate to say remain outside if it's raining. Don's got another suggestion for that?
That's right.
And if that is what will have to happen, do we have any umbrellas? Tents? No. I'm sorry, but that's the only way to be able to do that. Who are the, who are the people we're running to meet tonight?
You have two individuals who've expressed, well, actually, three individuals that were contacted about the position. One was the existing sitting judge, and that's Judge Englekeen. The other was the JP for our precinct, Demans Cliff Coleman. And the third was Richard Sapp, who had expressed some interest in being an associate judge. Mr. Sapp has, since you all emailed, said that he appreciated the invitation, that he'd rather be considered for an associate judge's position, not the municipal judge's position. Associate judge is basically an assistant municipal judge. So you have two candidates to interview tonight, one of which is Judge Englekeen, and the other one is Judge Coleman. And Mayor, they might be able to go in the front lobby and pull that door shut and then...
But if you hear something, judges, future judges, you've got to go outside. That's the only way to keep this thing fair. All right. Number between one and ten. What do you think the number is? Where is Mr. Englekeen? Oh, there you are. How are you?
I'm fine. I have to say four.
Well, no, I'm not past my past location. The number was seven, the holy number seven. So you will go first, Don.
John, is there a time limit on, so each question, or how, what kind of time reach they would?
Well, you know, I don't think we'd all have spent all night here, so what we'd like to do is maybe, what do you suggest?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, that's fine. All right, here we go. I'm right up here. And you can sit in that little chair.
Okay.
Judge Coleman, can you tell us something about, can you tell us about yourself, your community involvement, education, current, previous employment, experience, et cetera, and explain why you are the best person to serve as a municipal court judge for the villages of Salado?
Well, I was, I started kindergarten here in nineteen seventy-five, and I graduated from Salado in nineteen eighty-seven. From there, I went to Texas A.M., and I was in the Corps, I was in the Corps of Debs for four years, got a degree in Bachelor's, Bachelor's Science in the College of Engineering. I, when I left Texas A.M., I decided I wanted to be a police officer, and so I went down to Houston. I was told that you could learn most in the short amount of time in the city of Houston as a police officer, and I did it. I did that until nineteen ninety-seven, and then I came back home. I got married and adopted my son, had a daughter, and opened up a body shop. And I did that for many years. In two thousand and seven, my wife passed away. I remarried in two thousand and nine and have now five kids. And then, a couple of years ago, I decided, I decided I want to do something different. And I sure did. Ran for justice peace, and I won, and I've been doing that for a little over thirteen months now. As far as, as far as my community involvement, I was, when I moved back to Salado, I became the Little League president. I did that for about three and a half years. I'm a deacon at First Baptist Church. I am a supporter of Salado High School Athletics and the Salado Education Foundation. I don't know what my time frame is, but it's going to be pretty close.
Fifteen seconds.
And Salado is very near and dear to my heart.
Thank you, please.
Describe your, what you think the relationship should be between the mayor and the municipal court judge.
The mayor, the municipal court, and the alderman. Well, I think the alderman should select the municipal judge. I think, I think the schedule is, where the city administrator sets the schedule as far as when, along with the judge, along with when court is. But other than that, there shouldn't be decision-making in what the judge does based on what an alderman says, or what a city administrator says, or a mayor says. That he, the judge needs to be independent, and that is why he was selected, based upon the law as he sees it, and it would be compassionate that a judge should have while sitting on the bench.
Thank you.
Have you ever violated a federal, state, or local law excluding any traffic violations, excluding any traffic violations, and so please explain?
Say no. I don't need to do that stuff.
As a judge, what do you consider your greatest strengths? And what do you consider your weaknesses?
My greatest strength in being a judge is my compassion, the conviction that I have and the courage to be on the bench. Being a municipal judge is, of course, different than being a justice of peace. And as a, as a justice of peace, we are called out to the worst scenes that you can imagine at times. Families being torn apart due to death. Having my own family torn apart due to that is something that I can relate to, and I feel gives me an advantage in the right word, but certainly the compassion with the people and constituents on the worst day of their lives. Conviction, do the right thing, and if I'm not doing the right, the right thing, to be convicted by God. Not worrying about what other people think or what constituents think, but it is the right thing to do. And the courage to do it. The courage, it's not always easy as a judge to ignore the political pressures, to ignore the fact that this is a, this person is a prominent citizen of the, of the community or of the county. The courage to do the right thing all the time. I feel like I have done an amazing job in my first year plus, as far as justice peace, throughout the county, not just in Salado, which I care deeply about in my, in this precinct, but throughout the county, working Melton, Temple, and Colleen. But my, my weakness would be the fact that I only did this for just a little over a year.
Ten-time management, you went over about ten seconds.
It was getting close.
Judge Coleman, as a judge, describe one instance in which you face an ethical dilemma and how you resolve it.
Okay. Describe an ethical dilemma is, is I had the, I had the, I had a county investigator bring a warrant that he wanted me to sign. All I'm going to say about this is I recuse myself. It was the right thing to do. Not that I... It was the right thing to do, not that another, another judge needed to sign that warrant. It was an ethical decision, and I think it was, I, I, I worked very hard, and officers trust me, and they, I, I do, I sign warrants all over the county, Colleen, and, I mean, all over the county, they break me the warrants to sign. They know that I'm there early in the morning, and they know I'm there late at night. But this particular warrant is bad as, as much as I wanted to serve the community, and it was an ethical decision, and I recuse myself from signing that warrant.
Okay. All right.
Judge Coleman, how, how would you deal with difficult people, of which I am one of those, including peers, lawyers, clients, and litigants?
Draw on kindness. It's the way I do things. There is respect, certainly, certainly when you're on the bench, there is, there is a an aura of respect that, that needs to be had for the bench. But, but I run into situations in, in the line of work that I do where I am putting people in jail that are not too pleased. We, I stay very professional, and I don't give them a reason to, to escalate the situation. I diffuse, and I like to say that I just, I just try to kill people with kindness.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay.
One minute.
Okay, or less. I just, I just want to, I just want to say thank you for being considered, and I am thankful by this and being asked to, to interview you this, and I just thank you for your consideration. I, it is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Stand in the rail. All in favor, please, of Judge Engelman, please? Ready? I'll appear on this front chair.
Please. Mayor, just for the record, had you asked me what number did you prefer, et cetera?
You're hot. Okay.
Your Honor, we have a set of questions that we have to ask, and that you have two minutes response for. And we'll be keeping, sort of looking at you every once in a while, how close you get. First question, your honor, is, tell us about yourself, your community involvement, education, current, previous employment, judicial experience, et cetera, and explain why you are the best person to serve as our municipal judge for the village of Salado.
Well, I've been the judge for the village for about seven and a half, eight years, and before that, I served as the alderman under Tappy E before he died. So I've done that for a while. I also served fourteen years as a justice of peace. Retired a year ago, began to be simply a choice. And before that, I was with the public leverage commission for twenty-two years, and rose to the rank of lieutenant from that. And before that, I was a stroming with the city of Amarillo for five years, and served particularly Southside Amarillo. I, before that, I was in the air force for seven years. So basically, I've been in public service for twenty-nine years, about ten. I'm involved in Alliance Club, and a member of the Salado United Methodist Church, and I helped clean up the highways along the road, things like that, but I think that we don't see what it's like.
Thank you. John?
Sir, welcome, Judge. What should be the relationship between the municipal court and the mayor and the alderman?
Well, I hesitate to think of as having a relationship, you know, obviously, we, we do, because you're the one that appoints us in first place. But as far as the day-to-day operation, there's really not much involvement with it. And the reason for that is, is because if I'm doing my job, I'm not following what the law says I'm supposed to do, I'm going to do what the law says, and that's what you hired me to do. So as far as having a daily relationship, or anything along those lines, it's just not something about having a first class.
Have you, have you ever violated a federal, state, or local law excluding any traffic violations? And so, please explain.
I'm not, I'm not federal or state, or I could never duck these off, but I'm done. Now, I can't think of any local laws, or anything, but I think of any of the traffic violations or things like that.
As a judge, what do you consider your strengths? And what do you consider your weaknesses?
The best strength I have is my integrity. I have the ability to listen, and make a rule based on what I know requires, not what I'm asked, and people do ask me that, rules in certain ways. But you have to listen to what's being said, and you have to do that, you have to be able to listen, and I think just as much on the court, I'm able to listen. I think I communicate well with people. And I will say this, in the time that I've been a municipal judge here and associate, to my knowledge, I've never had anyone complain about how they were treated, or anything along those lines. So my, my communication skill with people are just good, as far as my listening skills are good, and my integrity is strong.
And weaknesses?
I'm sorry?
How weaknesses?
Gosh, can't think of any.
Okay. As a judge, I'm sorry, I freaking want to do this one for you.
You can read mine if you want. Judge Engelman, describe one instance in which you faced an ethical dilemma, and how you resolved it.
Pretty simple. A few years back, Supreme Court legal ruling about marrying same-sex marriage. And to be honest with you, I probably did about a hundred weddings a year, and made about six thousand dollars a year. But yet, the way I was raised, and with my religious beliefs, I had to make a decision whether I was going to continue to do weddings or not. And I chose not to do weddings at all. The choice was, you could either do weddings for everybody, or weddings for nobody. So my choice wasn't to do them at all. And what's been hard about that is, is I have had friends that were the same sex that wanted to get married, and I couldn't do that, and I just had to tell them no. But I've also had people that were close to me that wanted to get married, and I had to tell them no to it. So I would say that this one is perfect.
Judge Engelman, how do you deal with difficult people, including peers, lawyers, clients, and litigants?
Well, I didn't, I can honestly say, I don't think we've had very many that were just, you know, unruly, definitely not in the city court, I've had some JP court. But it's a matter of just letting them know who's in charge. Sometimes you just have to pull up and say, stop, and say, look, I'm the judge here, and I deserve the respect, and I don't have that special, and lay on the line so they know what, you know, who's, who's running the show.
You have one minute for any closing remarks.
I don't think I have anything else to pick now on saying, other than the fact that I would tell you that I enjoy this job, and like I said, I think I'm doing a good job for you, and I wouldn't do it any other way. So if I'm doing it wrong, I would probably still continue to do it wrong, and I do, I do it the best I can every time I'm here.
Thank you, Judge.
And I stand now with my complete...
We understand. Please grant you, Judge Coleman.
I want to thank both these gentlemen for very sincere and brilliant conversation that you have with us. Thank you very much. Number B. Discuss and consider possible action, appointing a municipal court judge. First, are there any questions that you would like to ask to us? If not, I will consider a motion.
I move that we appoint the Justice of Peace, Judge Coleman, to the municipal court judge position.
What, to your turn?
I have to step aside, Chief.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in discussion, please.
I'll tell you why I made the motion, if I did. In the past, we've always followed it as being, this being a position held by Justice of Peace as long as I can remember. And it's just kind of a position that's followed in that step. I, I can't say anything wrong about either candidate, but it's just been that way for a while, and I don't see a reason to do it otherwise, so just have to change.
Are there discussion, please? Do I make the motion to appoint a different judge?
Tom, we, Tom always do that, that you couldn't do that as a minimum, could you?
So you have a motion on the floor, but, I mean, what you could do is this, I mean, you could, if the motion's on the floor and that person's willing to withdraw their motion, you could accept nominations and put both names in the nomination, and then simply do a roll call vote, and have each person indicate who they vote for out of the two. Or you can just vote the motion that you got.
Questions on the floor. Discussion, please, in the room.
Question.
Question has been called. This is simple majority. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise. But congratulations. Don, Judge Engelman, thank you for your service.
You bet.
Don, thank you very much.
You bet.
And I think we won't do it other than just saying thank you. I want to give you a standing ovation. I thank you, sir. Oh, one other, one other thing, Don. I'd like to invite your wife to discuss weaknesses with us. Stay. Thanks, Don. Next one is number six. Public hearing and possible action. Hold a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, regulating the dedication of parkland for new residential subdivisions. Fees in lieu of dedication, parkland standards, and construction standards for parkland improvements, providing for severability, repealing conflicting ordinances, and providing for finding of fact an effective date and proper notice and meeting.
Mayor, we'd like to pull this item off the agenda and place on the February sixth agenda for public hearing consideration, and then the following meeting for second and final briefing.
Discussion and possible action, number eight. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed joint election resolution agreement between the village of Salado, Salado Independent School District, and the Salado Public Library District relating to the May second, twenty twenty elections in Salado, Texas.
Yes, your mayor, members of the board, this is the companion resolution to the ordinance that you adopted at your last meeting, calling the May election. This resolution sets out the mechanics of the partnership between the school district, the library district, and the village, same agreement as last year, except there's one difference, and that is, we have different types of voting equipment being used this year. We have a DS two hundred counting machines, the county's new voting equipment, where you'll have electronic as well as a ballot that will be printed, and you also have express voting machines that are part of that system. The one modification of this resolution, we would ask that you approve this resolution with the modification that instead of saying one express voting machine, that you eliminate the word one and the letter one, the number one, and that you simply say express voting machines as needed. So the way that line would read would be one DS two hundred counting machine and express voting machines as needed. It will be leased from Bell County for early in election may voting. Other than that, we recommend approval.
Questions to Don, please. Entertaining motion.
I don't know if we set the, adopt the agreement setting during election, May second, twenty twenty.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise. Passing. B. Discuss and consider the possible appointment of a member of the Salado Tourism Advisory Board. Don?
Yes, your members of the board, Mayor, you, as you know, have a tourism advisory board that meets on a monthly basis. Will Lowery, who chaired that board, recently resigned, so we've got a vacancy on that board, and so we've been looking for membership on that board. We've talked publicly about the need for positions, and we've had an individual step up and expressed interest in serving on that board. His name is Tim Stevens. He is the executive director of the Bell County Expo Center. He's expressed interest in serving on the board. You have his resume before you. I will tell you that Mr. Stevens is a very special person who is dedicated to Salado and this region, and was extremely excited about the opportunity to serve on this. Chadley and the tourism department works with him rather closely in, in the idea of promoting overnight visitation in Salado, so the name is before you for consideration.
Is he here tonight?
No, sir.
Questions to Don, please. Don, what did you say he has presented until I'm in the next one?
He's the executive director of the Bell County Expo Center.
Any other questions, please?
Is he going to, will he have time to operate this capacity?
Absolutely.
May I motion to approve, Mr. Stevens is presented. Is there a second?
Is he just leaving? Just leaving Salado?
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Do y'all allow comments from the audience at this point in time?
I'm sorry, what?
Do y'all allow comments from the audience at this point in time?
Would we allow, I'm sorry?
Sorry, comments from the audience at this time? Or is that irregular?
No, during discussion, if you want to say something, I would allow that.
Um, just out of curiosity, because that was something we were looking into, do y'all put out public notifications for the tourism advisory boards, or how would one go about to put one's name on the roster to be considered?
Right, we've issued several public announcements about the vacancies on the board, and the people who are interested to come by and submit an application, and what they do is they come by and submit an application, turn in a resume, and then it gets presented to the board. On this particular board, you need to be part of the accommodation industry from that state. standpoint, the visitor industry, uh, there's some chamber representation on this board. Uh, we have other boards that don't necessarily have specific, uh, membership requirements, uh, from that standpoint. The, the process is open and public, and in this situation, we've been talking for actually a month or two about the fact we've had vacancies on this board.
Okay, is that just on y'all's website?
Website, it's been, uh, we talked about putting it in the paper. I don't know if the paper's put it in there, but they've been here and are aware of those vacancies too.
Okay. And, and then lastly, does that create any sort of conflict of interest with him managing, uh, or his sole management position being in Belton?
No, not at all, because they, again, they work very closely with our tourism department, and we share back and forth, and we partner with them on a lot of things.
Okay. I thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
You have more than, you're not a rock. Right. We, any other, any other discussion concerning this?
Who's operating in the capacity now?
It's vacant.
So it's not a functional board?
Oh, no, it's a very functional board. It just has a vacancy on it.
Who's here and shipper?
Uh, right, well, right now, you've got your remaining board members on there. Uh, you've got, uh, Mayor Lances Weiss on that board, you've got David Hayes from the State Coach on that board, you've got, uh, table rock representation on that board, uh, you've got Mr. Shippin' on the board, you've got Mr. Crollup on the board. It's the same board that the, the alderman appointed previously at the beginning. They just have one vacancy.
Question. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise, passes. Number C. Discuss and consider approval of the acquisition of an additional grinder pumps for the village of Salado wastewater system. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of the board. As you know, when we started this project originally, uh, we purchased simplex pumps, uh, for the grinder pumps, which are basically a smaller pumping system. Uh, TCQ consultation has indicated that they would prefer us use duplex pumps on some of our restaurants to meet their requirements. Uh, so we, we made this, I think we announced that we did kind of an initial swap, uh, which caused a little bit of the additional expenditure, uh, several weeks ago on, on, I think, uh, the initial fly, five, I believe it was. Uh, and we need another four. And so, uh, what we'd like you to do tonight is basically authorize the additional expenditure of grinder pumps in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. What we're gonna be doing basically is swapping out on those, those units that were gonna be simplex, we're swapping those out for duplexes. Uh, it's a slight additional cost, uh, and that's what we're asking for authorization for, for the previous, as well as the ones we're ordering right now.
How much did you say?
Uh, it's gonna be an additional thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and those are bond pumps.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, thirty thousand one fifty. Oh, we've not, yeah, we've not used them at all, so what we're doing is we're swapping out.
I thought if we wanted to swap out, we'd be able to. You're talking about ones that get installed?
No, 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 no. We're talking about un, un, uninstalled at this point. Those that are in, I guess, several of them are in the process of being installed at this point, so we have an inventory awaiting for installation. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna swap out the inventory, uh, with duplexes and simplexes for a couple of, okay?
My point was we're getting those back in the inventory.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr.? China, much?
Question, a privilege, expenditure of thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the bond pumps for additional duplex truck.
Total of nine, considering the previous purchase and this purchase.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise, passes. Well, that concludes our business for the evening. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? Sir, second?